Morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. It's 10:33 according to the clock on the wall, which may be a minute or too fast, but still it's time to get moving. If you have anything that makes use phones, whatever, please remember to turn them off. And if you have any paperwork, Mr. Curran is the man to see. With that, we're going to be led in the invocation by Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson of the Second Baptist Church. Following that, Commissioner Freeling will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you wish to join in either or both, please stand. Pastor Robinson.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today first to thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We're grateful for our lives, our health, and our strength. We're especially grateful for your protection and your provision throughout the pandemic. Heavenly Father, as we gather today for our express purpose of caring for the administrative and logistical needs of the county we serve, we ask that you would lead and direct our Barien County Commissioners in their efforts to provide for the many needs of our county and the constituents each Commissioner represents. We ask for continued unity within the municipalities that we serve, not only in times of tension, but also in times of peace. Finally, we ask that you bless our governmental leadership, whether they hold offices on the national, state, or local level, so that we may continue to be the strongest country in the world, living as one nation, another thee, indivisible, with justice and liberty for all. Please bless the municipalities within Barien County and the great state of Michigan. It's in your name that we ask all of these petitions, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Robinson.
Please join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the product of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again, Pastor Robinson. We understand if you have to make rounds this morning. If you're able to stay, we're happy to have you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bell.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Freeling.
Present.
Harrison.
Here.
Pinkelman.
Here.
Majerri.
Here.
Ah.
Here.
Pitchford.
Here.
Walrath.
Here.
Werfel.
Here.
Yarborough.
Present.
Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 present.
Thank you. Minutes from last week need to be approved. Is there a motion? Moved by Harrison, supported by Pitchford. Any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. I think we have some communication.
Yes, you received one communication from Alicia Thomas, an invitation by the South Bend Chocolate Company, inviting you to the celebration of the Indiana Dinosaur Museum on February 17th at the South Bend International Airport, received on January 27.
Okay. We have resolutions to do. This is the time, if you have any comments about them. We'll get to general public comments later in the meeting. Right now, anything on the agenda, in the way of resolutions, if you'd like to talk about it, this would be the time. We'd be happy to hear from you. All right. It does. It includes the resolution on the generator, the new generator for the
Mr. Chair, you have 12 aces.
Thank you. Terry and Mamie, would you be willing to read respectively resolutions jail that ends in 2141, I believe. Okay, since there aren't any comments, we do have two honorary resolutions to do. If
in the record. It is a resolution dated February 2nd for 2023 honoring Sherri Kestner Key.
it's all right, we'll pull those for individual attention. Those would be ending in 2136 and ending in 2136 and 2137? A look at the number on this one. Okay, so you have 36 and Mamie you have 37. Is
Sherri retired from the village of Barien Springs as the clerk there, and so it reads,
2137. Is everyone okay with that? All right. We'll get to those momentarily. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar
"The Honorable Board of Commissioners of Barien County, Michigan, approve the following
that all right?
I don't have 36 in front of me.
You don't?
There's nothing.
including the resolution ending in 2141, but excluding 2136 and 2137?
resolution. Whereas Sherri Kestner Key is a lifelong resident of the village of Barien
Well, hang on.
Springs and graduated from Barien Springs High School, and whereas she became the clerk
Move.
Moved by Bell, seconded by Pitchford. Discussion.
of the village in 2001 and has served in that role since that time, and whereas during
Hearing none, will you call the roll?
her 21 years as clerk, she has served under six village presidents and has helped to
Curran.
guide the village with professionalism, integrity, and honesty, and whereas highlights of her
Thank you.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
career include being named Village Clerk of the Year in 2010, achieving Master Municipal
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Clerk Certification in 2011, and being named Notary of the Year in 2012, and whereas
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Ms. Kestner Key's leadership and commitment for the village of Barien Springs equals
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Elliott.
the mission of Barien County by improving the quality of life for present and future generations, and whereas she retired at the end of 2022, now therefore be it resolved, hereby resolved, that this Barien County Board of Commission formally recognizes Sherri Kestner Key for her years of dedicated service for her community and wishes her a happy, healthy retirement. Be it further resolved that Ms. Kestner Key's life, actions, contributions reflect most favorably upon her, her family, the village of Barien Springs, the county of Barien, the state of Michigan, and the United States of America, respectfully submitted by the Barien County Board of Commissioners, and it's signed by all of us."
Moving towards adoption, is that correct?
That is correct. I would make that motion.
Is there support? Moved by Freeling, supported by Werfel. Any discussion? Adam, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 aces.
Thank you. My understanding is that Sherri Kestner Key could not join us today. She actually retired the end of December, but she's aware and she'll have something suitable for hanging on her wall. The resolution ending in 2137, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to say that Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson is here, his wife, and some of the members of our church, Second Baptist. And so I am pleased to read this resolution. Barien County Board of Commissioners, Resolution B2302137, February 2nd, 2023, honoring Second Baptist Church. The Honorable Board of Commissioners of Barien County, Michigan, approves the following resolution. Whereas on December 23rd, 2022, the entire county of Barien experienced a blizzard of historic magnitude that brought wind chill values to dangerous levels, made travel extremely hazardous or impossible in some areas, and tested the limits of our utility infrastructure. And whereas during that winter event, the city of Benton Harbor experienced a citywide power outage, and whereas the city of Benton Harbor Public Safety Department and Mayor Marcus Mohammed asked for assistance to provide a warm place for residents of Riveterre's Apartments with approximately hundreds in need, and whereas Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson and the Second Baptist Church at 600 Donald Atkins Drive answered the call for assistance by opening their doors within an hour of being notified. And whereas from 8:00 PM on the 23rd until about 4:00 AM Christmas Eve, Pastor Robinson provided warmth, comfort, and meals to the approximately 35 people who were able to be transported to the church until power was restored. And whereas Mother Teresa said, "Love cannot remain by itself. It has no meaning." Love has to be put into action, and that action is service. And whereas the actions of Paris Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson and the church during that winter storm event are the epitome of community service. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that this Barien County Board of Commissioners formally honors Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson and the congregation of the Second Baptist Church for their acts of kindness and service to assist residents of the city of Benton Harbor during the December 2022 winter storm, and appreciates them opening their church to take in those in need. Respectfully submitted, Barien County Board of Commissioners. There are 12 of us, and we all signed this. I would like to enter this as a motion.
Okay. Motion by Yarborough, is there support? Support by Pitchford, is there discussion? Pastor Robinson, you were front and center, sir, during this crisis. We, as the sheriff knows, had several folks involved in Zoom meetings throughout the course of the evening on into the early hours of the next morning, as we were trying to get things arranged with bus service and other transport vehicles, looking to open Mendel Center. All of that takes time. The doors of your church swung open almost immediately and provided comfort, shelter, and much-needed warmth to people who were at significant risk because of what Mother Nature brought upon us that night. And we all owe you a debt of gratitude, sir.
Thank you. I would say briefly that our church has been in existence for 147 years, serving the community of Benton Harbor, and we continue to serve and we look forward to further partnerships with the county of Barien Springs.
I will, but I'm going to call the roll first, just so we make this official. Adam, clerk.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 aces.
Thank you. Terry and Mamie, would you be willing to read respectively resolutions ending in 2136 and 2137?
Thank you.
A look at the number on this one. Okay, so you have 36 and Mamie you have 37. Is that all right?
I don't have 36 in front of me.
You don't?
There's nothing.
Well, hang on.
Excellent. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be able to read this resolution in the record. It is a resolution dated February 2nd for 2023 honoring Sherri Kestner Key. Sherri retired from the village of Barien Springs as the clerk there, and so it reads, "The Honorable Board of Commissioners of Barien County, Michigan, approve the following resolution. Whereas Sherri Kestner Key is a lifelong resident of the village of Barien Springs and graduated from Barien Springs High School, and whereas she became the clerk of the village in 2001 and has served in that role since that time, and whereas during her 21 years as clerk, she has served under six village presidents and has helped to guide the village with professionalism, integrity, and honesty, and whereas highlights of her career include being named Village Clerk of the Year in 2010, achieving Master Municipal Clerk Certification in 2011, and being named Notary of the Year in 2012, and whereas Ms. Kestner Key's leadership and commitment for the village of Barien Springs equals the mission of Barien County by improving the quality of life for present and future generations, and whereas she retired at the end of 2022, now therefore be it resolved, hereby resolved, that this Barien County Board of Commission formally recognizes Sherri Kestner Key for her years of dedicated service for her community and wishes her a happy, healthy retirement. Be it further resolved that Ms. Kestner Key's life, actions, contributions reflect most favorably upon her, her family, the village of Barien Springs, the county of Barien, the state of Michigan, and the United States of America, respectfully submitted by the Barien County Board of Commissioners, and it's signed by all of us."
Moving towards adoption, is that correct?
That is correct. I would make that motion.
Is there support? Moved by Freeling, supported by Werfel. Any discussion? Adam, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 aces.
Thank you. My understanding is that Sherri Kestner Key could not join us today. She actually retired the end of December, but she's aware and she'll have something suitable for hanging on her wall. The resolution ending in 2137, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to say that Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson is here, his wife, and some of the members of our church, Second Baptist. And so I am pleased to read this resolution. Barien County Board of Commissioners, Resolution B2302137, February 2nd, 2023, honoring Second Baptist Church. The Honorable Board of Commissioners of Barien County, Michigan, approves the following resolution. Whereas on December 23rd, 2022, the entire county of Barien experienced a blizzard of historic magnitude that brought wind chill values to dangerous levels, made travel extremely hazardous or impossible in some areas, and tested the limits of our utility infrastructure. And whereas during that winter event, the city of Benton Harbor experienced a citywide power outage, and whereas the city of Benton Harbor Public Safety Department and Mayor Marcus Mohammed asked for assistance to provide a warm place for residents of Riveterre's Apartments with approximately hundreds in need, and whereas Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson and the Second Baptist Church at 600 Donald Atkins Drive answered the call for assistance by opening their doors within an hour of being notified. And whereas from 8:00 PM on the 23rd until about 4:00 AM Christmas Eve, Pastor Robinson provided warmth, comfort, and meals to the approximately 35 people who were able to be transported to the church until power was restored. And whereas Mother Teresa said, "Love cannot remain by itself. It has no meaning." Love has to be put into action, and that action is service. And whereas the actions of Paris Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson and the church during that winter storm event are the epitome of community service. Now therefore be it hereby resolved, that this Barien County Board of Commissioners formally honors Pastor Kenneth Eric Robinson and the congregation of the Second Baptist Church for their acts of kindness and service to assist residents of the city of Benton Harbor during the December 2022 winter storm, and appreciates them opening their church to take in those in need. Respectfully submitted, Barien County Board of Commissioners. There are 12 of us, and we all signed this. I would like to enter this as a motion.
Okay. Motion by Yarborough, is there support? Support by Pitchford, is there discussion? Pastor Robinson, you were front and center, sir, during this crisis. We, as the sheriff knows, had several folks involved in Zoom meetings throughout the course of the evening on into the early hours of the next morning, as we were trying to get things arranged with bus service and other transport vehicles, looking to open Mendel Center. All of that takes time. The doors of your church swung open almost immediately and provided comfort, shelter, and much-needed warmth to people who were at significant risk because of what Mother Nature brought upon us that night. And we all owe you a debt of gratitude, sir.
Thank you. I would say briefly that our church has been in existence for 147 years, serving the community of Benton Harbor, and we continue to serve and we look forward to further partnerships with the county of Barien Springs.
I will, but I'm going to call the roll first, just so we make this official. Adam, clerk.
Harrison.
Yes.
Pinkelman.
Yes.
Majerri.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Walrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 12 aces. Motion carried.
Thank you. Mac, maybe if you all slide together?
What should we do? You be in the middle?
I got you.
Oh, I'm in the middle.
I gotta turn around.
I know. Who does he think he is?
Okay, this way. For some reason Annette's head is... Oh, there we go. One more. All right, thank you.
Can I get my wife? Come on, right quick, right quick.
Sir, if you look that direction, they're gonna get a better picture.
Absolutely.
My wife, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there we go. Right here. Look at me first and then the chair. Sorry, chair.
Okay.
Do we get out the way? I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's gonna be a tough act to follow for the rest of this meeting, but much appreciated. We are finished with resolutions, and I'd like permission to tweak the agenda, to slide in requisition review that we didn't get to this morning because we were running over. If there's no objection, and Annette went upstairs and grabbed them, we need to formally amend the agenda. Corporate counsel?
I think you would.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the agenda for this meeting to slide in requisition review?
Hello.
Moved by Walrath, supported by Bell. Any discussion? Technically, it's a two-thirds majority vote, but if nobody makes any sound to the negative, we're gonna take it as good. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. I would deem that a supermajority. So the agenda is amended. Annette?
Sorry. I, when you passed the content calendar approvals, I just passed it around to sign it. So did anybody have any questions, though, about any of the requisitions that were on the list that we need to explain? Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, committee reports. Mr. Admin Chair.
Thank you, Mac. This morning, we had Sheriff Bailey and Chief Deputy Boyce in to see us, and Commissioner Walrath would like to report out on that. Yeah. Our sheriff and chief deputy were in, and sheriff talked a little bit about the churches and what they've been doing coming into the jails. He said that they have up to eight or 10 different ministers, pastors, who have been visiting in the jail, making a difference, going around and speaking with the prisoners. They also have a Monday night jail service, jail service, church service for the, for the, those who want to attend. And he's still having a lot of issues with staffing, especially female officers, trying to get them into the jail, working and out on the road. It's still a nationwide problem and still having trouble getting those officers, but he's gonna keep working at it and keep trying. So we have confidence in our sheriff. He's currently got 11 volunteers that are going through Reserve Academy. These are volunteers that can help out with the road officers or help out in ways that the sheriff teams necessary. Also, this month, we welcomed chaplain Don Bennett. He's been the lead chaplain since December of last year. He's involved with the Reach for the Forgotten Jail Ministry since 2013. He thinks this is a name change from the Forgotten Man Ministry we've had at the jail for many, many years, and it's a great program, and will be continuing for some time to come. During the month of December, Sheriff's Department worked 1,351 complaints, 205 tickets were issued, and 124 were arrested, and the kitchen served over 34,000 meals once again in January. That's my report.
Thank you, Dave. After the sheriff, we had Caitlin Sampson from our 911 center. And if Alex or Julie, if you have your hand out, could you please just pass one down, so at least they can see what she handed out to us. And please flip it over and look at the back. There are pictures. They got all-new consoles and carpeting, and that project is complete. She talked to us, obviously, about staffing. You know, she's down. She said she's down about a third, but then she likened it to the state, which is also statewide down about a third. So she said we're in line with all the other shortages that are going on. And in other words, we're not unique in that, in those efforts. She did talk about
Thank you. Questions for Finance? None. Mr. Chair of Personnel and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met, also met this morning. We reviewed and approved a consulting contract with Midwest Strategy Group. That'll come to you in a short while at the next meeting. We also had Carrie Smutanka Haney come in and talk with us about Juneteenth as a holiday. You know, if you remember back in June of last year, there was some confusion as a result of Supreme Court action on that. And so we're, we'll be continuing those discussions with the trial court and administration to sort out best strategy for the county. We also had our GIS department come in. Lex came in and brought along one of his staff, Larry, and they talked about where they're at as far as various mapping activities. And we spent a fair amount of time talking about surveyor compensation for the remonumentation project. There hasn't been any change in their compensation for about 10, 15 years. So there's some sense that it's time to change the fee that we pay them. If you remember, this is money coming to us from the state of Michigan, so it's not county dollars. It comes in the form of a grant, and then we hire the surveyors to complete the, identify the corners with respects to remonumentation. And then we had a lengthy discussion regarding mileage and compensation and reimbursement for expenses. And so we'll continue that discussion and bring forth a resolution here in the next, probably within the next 30 days would be my, my expectation. And that would, I think, cover everything that we talked about.
Questions for PHS?
Okay, you got it ready? So this, this would be the other video for 911 dispatching.
Okay, so we'll do this, and then we'll get into Commissioner Reports. Alrighty.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the efforts in trying to make this happen. I really do.
Well, try the same link we had earlier with, with Mike. Sometimes it's a bad day for, for the information superhighway has flat tire on it. Okay, Commissioner Reports, John.
The only thing I have to report is, I don't know if you guys are aware, but the director of Takata has stepped down recently. And so I had a brief meeting with Brandon Kavnap from Southwest Michigan Planning Commission on just what ways, you know, city and county officials can try to provide some direction of Takata, working with the city of Benton Harbor and also surrounding community leaders, just to help provide transportation to the residents of the Twin City area. So that, there should be a further discussion coming soon, and that's my report.
I attended the meeting of the Health Board yesterday. There's, I think the media reported discussion they had about use of the opioid settlement dollars. So it was good discussion. And Guy Miller, our health officer, is leading an initiative to bring together a number of different groups so that there's some sense of order in how best to use that, those dollars. And so that, at some point in time, there'll be a proposal coming to the county board for consideration.
Just as a quick reminder, so the opioid settlement, the initial inflow of cash should be happening anytime within the other coming days. We've set up a portal. We provided the other wire transfer. This is one that it's not going to be an immediate windfall. This is an 18-year payout, roughly, rough numbers, about $4 million over an 18-year period. So Guy has met with the sheriff, prosecutor, the trial court administrator, and the public defender's office. They're trying to come up with suggested uses of those dollars. It's a nice amount, but it is staggered over close to two decades. So just understand, it, it's not going to be a windfall of cash immediately.
I had a great meeting with administrator, with the prosecutor, with the sheriff, and undersheriff about gun violence interventions and what we can start to do. There is a federal grant that's out there between half a million and $2 million around CBI. It's been implemented in other counties before, CBI is Community Violence Intervention. And what it does on the top level is it employs credible messengers and people to actually go into communities and disrupt, disrupt gun violence. They're going into schools, they're going into, they're working with pastors, they're working with people in the community to go in and say, okay, who are some of the individuals in community that have the propensity to commit violence, who are on the track to? And if we can give them essentially what you see specifically in communities called Building the Village, we're trying to rebuild that village by hiring people in the community who understand how to work with individuals that might be at risk. And other counties have employed the, they've employed actual felons, people who have worked with the criminal justice system, been in the criminal justice system before, to go in and do that work. So we're in the preliminary stages. I'm working with different people to try to get this idea started. And like the prosecutor said earlier, this could fail. This could not be an issue that works out, but I think it's worth the try. I think we have a great shot at getting this grant. There are people at Michigan State University who work hand-in-hand with the Department of Justice who want to sign on to this grant application if we put it in. And the crux of the conversation is, where is the money best? And where's the, where is the place where the money should land? Which department should it go through? So we're in those conversations now. If there's any commissioners that want to get involved, that want to hear about what we're doing, please let me know. I have a lot of handouts and a lot of reading you could do. Thank you.
I think it's outstanding that we recognized Pastor Robinson for, for what he and his church did for us. Commissioner Volrath, Commissioner Harrison, and myself, we are the commissioners' representatives on the EOC. And when the EOC was activated, we were actively participating as well. And the warming centers is one of many logistical things that the EOC is juggling. And, and I think it's outstanding that you did that. I participated Tuesday in a workshop that Rocky put on from the, the EOC or the Emergency Management for warming center locations in the municipalities. Anytime we have an incident, and in this case, the blizzard is an incident, we critique it and find out where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are. And so that's why Rocky held this warming center workshop, and it was very well-attended. There was some good information exchanged, both from them upward and from us down. So I did attend that, which I think was, was very helpful and helps that whole process. In fact, Bob was also attending that training. So that's my report.
Yeah, I don't have any meetings this week, but I'd like to thank Coloma Township and the Police Department, the employees for putting out information. Now, I forget, Tuesday morning, we had the power go off. I got up about 5 o'clock. The floor felt a little chilly. Found the power, been out a couple of hours, and stayed offered. It was off in Coloma Township, Coloma City, I mean, from one end to the other. And they put out information and just kind of let people know what was going on and how many were affected. We knew it was more widespread than, because when you first happens, you don't know if it's your house, if it's the next door neighbor's. You start looking around. It don't get light till 8 o'clock. So power at my house did come on about 8:30, and some of the other ones were closer to 10, 10:30. They had it on and went off. Haven't heard anything why that big outage happened. But I'd just like to thank Coloma Township, getting that information out, because it, because it helps. And, and people were nervous, and you don't know. So my mother's 92, and she's in her house, and I'm nervous. You know, I was more worried for her than myself, so.
It's a follow-up that I got an email request with similar, what happened. So I was able to reach out to AEP. I'll forward that correspondence out to the full board to provide some background on.
It was about 15 degrees when I got up that morning. It was cool. That's my report.
I have no report.
Neither do I.
No report.
No report on committees. Just want to remind any members of the Board of Commission to either consider attending or pass along to any broadband champions that you might have in your communities that the Michigan High Speed Internet Office, fondly named my high, will be in Marion County in Benton Harbor at the Mendel Center Room F103 from 2 to 4 p.m. on Tuesday, February 14th. It is a listening tour to hear citizens' concerns as it relates to broadband connectivity. They want to hear your story to better understand as they mold their next objectives for the roadmap that the state has created and the possibility of an influx of $1.6 billion for spending as it relates to infrastructure and broadband. So. Again, Tuesday, February 14th. Show some love for broadband. That's the way I remember it. 2 to 4 p.m. Oh, great.
Commissioner, it's the perfect Valentine's Day activity. Hang out with the state.
Show some love. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. I have no report, but I thank you all for making the motion, the resolution, and for honoring my pastor, Kenneth Eric Robinson. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, just a quick items to run through. So new commissioners' tours started last week. So we had two commissioners and then some veteran join us, and we got through the courts. We got through equalization, and then we also got through the, the jails. So to Commissioner Belt, Commissioner Pitchford, Commissioner Ott, Commissioner Freeling, thank you. The plan for next week would be on the 9th, we would knock out Empire. So that would include your 911, your EOC, motor pool, printing, and records. And then we'll get over to animal control. I think, once we get through those two operations, it's going to easily be two to two and a half hours. So we'll do that. For the full board, I've sent an email to all of you, just asking for the 16th. Immediately following the, the board meeting, I would love to get as many of you as possible down to the various road department garages. Mark's here. Mark's eager to get you out into a vehicle, get you down to the garages. I think to maximize the time, the, the plan would be to get you to Bakersfield, over to Baroda, and then to Aucle. We could do Napier at a later date. But if they're fairly spread out, it will take a little bit of time. But today, tomorrow, if you could email back, if you're available, we need a head count. That's going to then really guide what vehicle or vehicles we end up using to get you all to those garages. Okay, that's all I've got.
Questions for Brian? Okay, general, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Question for Brian. Will we be traveling together from here?
So for the, the road department garages, it's really going to depend on head count. If there's just a handful of you, it's probably going to be pile into my car, pile into Mark's. And we'll just do it that way. In the past, if the full board was interested, at that point, we'd grab a bus and take you to the, the various locations. We're planning it by year, depending on how the schedule looks.
Right. Now, general public comments. Anything under the sun in two minutes or less? Name and town, name and town. Anyone wish to be heard?
Okay, Pelzer, hey, your township. You know, that string found not working. There's one in the courthouse. I was over there last Monday or Tuesday. Same thing. There's no water coming out of there. You're calling the plumber to fix that. Tell him to go over to the courthouse and fix that one too, okay? And I got, I want to say something about these resolutions. Now, we have no input on what, what goes in here. By the time you, he reads them, you guys order them, it's too late. Unless I find some error or something, I want clarification. What I suggest, when he reads them, we should have a chance to criticize them or say something about them instead of bringing that stuff in front of us and say, let's see it. No, I don't know why, why we're bothering showing up here. You don't, we've got to have a little input here. How about us putting a resolution in there? How about if I write one? No, no, you don't like that, huh? Now, another thing is, I asked last week or a couple of weeks ago, who do I talk to to complain what's going on here? I want a name. I want an office. No, 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 not him. Why talk to him? Doesn't do any good. He's a new guy. I want to, who do I, don't you, who do I, who do I go to? Come on, name, give me a name. Oh, nobody ever complained about what's going on in here, right? Nobody ever complained about the small room here, or the drinking fountain out there, or this or that? I'm sure they had complaints, but just don't know, don't know where to go. Somebody give me a name. Who do I see? You don't want, you don't want anybody to complain about this, right? But you don't listen to me. Who's, who's your, who's your boss?
Two minutes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pelzer.
Who's your boss?
Always happy to hear from you. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is Sean Hill. I live in the city of St. Joe. I come here as a parent again. I never thought I'd have to come here. But I come in light of the local school, Coloma Schools, where the teacher gave out sexually explicit book to one of her students, well, actually several of her students. And I never thought I'd be standing here as a parent. Like, where, where have we gone? You know, where? Who's, why are we having to stand up for our kids against all this craziness in this world? I mean, that's what we're supposed to do as parents. Yeah, I understand it, but why are we even having to be here at this point? I read the ABC 57 put out that our county prosecutor is not going to press any charges. Read through what he was talking about. He cited one, a section of the law, 722, I think it was, or something like that. But it's on 722 dot 676, which I understand what he's saying in there. But it talks about patently offensive to contemporary local community standards of adults as to what is suitable for minors. And then it also talks about appealing to prurient interest of minors as determined by contemporary local community standards. To me, community standards are formed by you guys, the body, right? I mean, I get that the school board is the one who's in charge of the Coloma Schools, but as county commissioners, I come before you and ask you, let's help and protect these kids from all this sexually explicit material. I mean, it was fairly obvious. It was quoted what was in this book, and it was given to our minors. I mean, last I knew, you had to be 18 years old to buy a Playboy and a Magg, or in the.
Two minutes, sir.
gas station, you know? So I'm asking you to come up, come together, come up with an ordinance, please, and start protecting our kids. Stand up and protect our kids.
Someone said this would be a good time to talk about getting a tentative night meeting schedule going. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know that we have been discussing our 2023 calendar. And for the sake of staffing, to be able to schedule different appointments, vacations, things like that, I had mentioned in finance that maybe we should just tentatively secure a few of those dates as it relates to our night meeting schedule. dates as it relates to our night meeting schedule. And so the four dates that I had suggested and proposed was May fourth, June first, July thirteenth and August third. We can add additional on either side of that, of April sixth and September seventh, if there's additional night meeting locations because tentatively we've had conversations. Typically, new commissioners, we try to have them offer to host within their district. And I know that a few of those municipalities have already connected and you've had conversations and you're waiting to hear back. MSU Extension is one that we typically try to go and attend. And then I know that Three Oaks has also extended an invitation. So those are some of the locations that could potentially be five or six meetings that we could schedule, but those first four dates are the ones I'd like to propose. That's May fourth, June first, July thirteenth and August third.
Thank you. Yes, and Hager also.
Yes.
Supervisor DiMaggio called, I think on Tuesday and expressed interest in hosting us in September.
At the restaurant?
And that was one of the.
At the city hall?
Well, it was one of the things we discussed is the township hall, they could adjust the seating to accommodate us up front by bringing a couple of tables up and sort of cantilevering them off of the, the main table. And I told him, I said, you know, this group appreciates good food. And he said, oh, yeah, well, we can, we can make that happen either before the meeting or after the meeting is done, if everybody wants to go over to DiMaggio's, that, that's easy to arrange. And he was talking September, right after Labor Day.
Okay, that would be the seventh.
Seventh or fourteenth. But you all want to plug in the four for now and, and straight away figure it out then? Their motion?
Is that the only month?
Pardon? No, I mean, he could, he could do another month as well. I asked him about, you know, going for or aft in terms of four dates that I knew we were talking about. I said April or, or September and I told him George Mangold had also expressed interest. George is the Three Oaks Township Supervisor and mentioned Freelix, is that the correct?
Freelix.
Freelix. Yeah.
Right across the street.
Thank you, noted. And so I, I mentioned to George, we were going to try to get this figured out and he was good with April. So if you want to do four for now and then figure it out, and I did tell him, you know, the food was really good last year and we look forward to good food again. And he said he understood, so.
Absolutely.
I told Izzy we'd pay. So we're not looking for a freebie.
No. So could we secure those?
Yeah, moved by Pitchford, supported by Volrath to plug in the four dates for time being, is that, sir?
Can I have the September date again, please?
September seventh was the tentative, but those are not, that is not a meeting we're approving at this point in time. It's only May through August.
Would you be willing to read the dates again?
Yes. May fourth, June first, July thirteenth and August third.
Locations to be determined.
Correct.
Yeah. Sir?
MSU Extension, don't we always do that the same month? That doesn't vary, does it?
It has in the past, we've varied that from time to time.
Okay. As I say, we could go ahead and plug that in now, but okay, I got you. We're just setting the dates, not necessarily the locations.
Then used to be determined.
Okay. And we're saving September the seventh or, and we're saving September the seventh for a?
A tentative fifth.
End of the fifth.
Depending on the number of locations.
You don't want six or seven or?
I'm trying to be sensitive of.
We, we understand that some people may not be available on a given evening, may have something else going and that's fine and, and is respected. And some folks have subtly expressed their opposition to doing this. But that in mind, there's a motion that's been seconded to approve the dates, May through August inclusive, locations to be determined. There's no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, they were plugged into those dates for now. Any other, other business? Under the category of announcements and reminders, wear your good clothes on the ninth of March because we'll be doing photos at the committee of the whole. Now, if there aren't any other announcements or reminders, we'll break for five minutes and then we'll convene back for litigation update under the attorney-client privilege under MCL fifteen point two-six-eight, Aaron Small C, right? Now, when we come back, we'll need one, but we're just going to take a five-minute break and come back and then go into closed session or if you want, we can vote to do it now, take a five-minute restroom break and then start up again. Under the attorney-client privilege and under that MCL section, okay. Moved by Volrath, is there a second? Seconded by Pitchford, any discussion? All in favor? Now, roll call.
Hinkleman.